I call to order the work session of October 14th at 4:17 PM. Five board members are present in person and justices joining us online and Karen will be joining any minute now. The first item on our agenda is the superintendent search process planning and I will hand it over to Hank and his team.
Thank you Chair Garg. I trust you can hear me? Yeah? If I'm too loud or too quiet, please let me know. It's great to be here with you. This is our kickoff meeting, if you will, although we've had some one-on-ones with board members and we also had a subcommittee meeting. This is our first time with you as a full board since you made the decision that honored us enormously, which is that we are your partners for this incredibly important moment in time in the Beaverton School District history. So, thank you for that honor. We look very much forward to the work that we will take on together. I think we all know each other. I'm here with two phenomenal educational leaders and search consultants, Kristi Perry and Kathleen Roddenord. So, I will move us to the next item on our agenda, which is the subcommittee report. And Chair Garg, I think you're going to speak to that?
Yeah. So, for everyone, the board members, we met last Friday with the subcommittee search members with Dr. Trong and Director Raji and all three of you were there. We covered the timeline and most of the stuff that we covered, you all will be covering in our work session, so I'm not going to go over in detail. But there were two items that caught my attention was that the next main item is to get a next superintendent search criteria. And the two things that is going to help us in getting to there is the focus group meetings and the online survey. The online survey is open to all and the focus group meetings is what the group is looking for in the board members' input on what focus groups that we want to have. So, I would like to pass it on to both of you because most of it, you are going to cover it today. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. So, next up, we wanted to discuss communication norms and logistics. And essentially, we'd like you to just think about your communications, first of all, if you're approached by prospective applicants or people who are wanting to share with you the names of prospective applicants. And starting at this moment, we would like you just to relieve yourselves of any worry about that. And if you get someone approaching you or sending you an email of that nature, we would like you just to pass that on to us. So, if you could say, you know, "Thank you so much for that information, for reaching out," and I'm going to turn that over to our search consultants. We'll be providing you our email addresses and so you can offer that as a point of contact for someone who reaches out to you.
May I jump in for just a nanosecond?
Yes, please.
It's good. Kathleen says if, and it's really a when. You will, for sure, be contacted either by folks who feel strongly about a possible candidate or a candidate themselves, or potentially somebody who wants you to not hire somebody. And so, just be prepared for that. That's just standard, that people do that. And so, we'll ask you to heed Kathleen's cautions to just forward those to us.
Yes, yes. So, as far as communications flow and logistics, as we shared in our proposal and I think as we've shared in both meetings with staff and in the subcommittee meeting, we are going to need the most support from staff early on in the process and it's going to be with respect to helping us schedule those focus groups and also get the online survey off the ground. There's going to be a lot of communication between your consultants, the entire board, the subcommittee, the staff, and we just want to assure you that we're here. If you have questions of us, we're going to talk about how we'd like you to manage your questions. And I want to say that the designated district staff people that are going to be assisting us, Carrie has been incredibly helpful thus far and she has indicated her willingness to take on a couple of important roles on the front end of this process and I'll be talking about that in just a minute. The comms team and the board secretary are going to be helpful with respect to the logistics of scheduling focus groups, sending out invitations and so on. But we're going to try to, you know, work alongside the team and make sure that we are picking up as much of the work as we can, as far as constructing the groups and that sort of thing. We also ask, with respect to communications with the broader public, we very much like to have you all have a superintendent search link on your website so that that can be regularly updated and your community can be informed about where we are in the process. We also would ask, and this is one of the places where Carrie indicated her willingness, we ask that a special email address be created, something like superintendentsearch@beaverton. And that is a place where patrons can submit questions or comments. Carrie has agreed to monitor that email address for us and she'll pass on to us things that require a response from us. Yeah, let's see. So, we will be, as I said, sending you an email so you have our contact information. And as far as ongoing communication between us, you know, we'll obviously be meeting in person on several key milestones and we'll be meeting with the subcommittee on a regular basis as well. But I also just want you to be aware, we're going to be doing some communication with you via email. And so, our emails, we're going to direct to the board chair with a copy to the board secretary. You all will be included in those communications as well. Our practice is to put the rest of the board in the BCC line so that there isn't inadvertent reply all that happens. So, we also just want to make you aware that if you have questions of us, sometimes people, you know, have, an individual board member might have a question of the consultants. And what we would ask in that respect is that you send that question to Carrie and Carrie will pass that on to us. We will reply to the individual who was asking the question and will also blind copy the rest of the board so that you're getting exactly the same information. I just, you know, we're so grateful to be working with such talented and competent staff that you have in the district and we know that your communications team is going to be very pivotal in keeping your community informed and helping us connect with students and parents and staff. So, as I said, the heavy lift is going to be on the front end, as far as staff goes. And so, we will be getting a lot of support from the comms team and also the board secretary as far as the logistics for the focus groups. Kristi's going to talk more about focus group stuff in just a few minutes. Anything else on communication that we need to touch on? Okay.
I would just say unless board members have questions.
Yes. And we'll have time for questions at the end, but by all means, jump in if you have them as we're moving through the agenda.
I saw a hand from Director Kossen? No? Okay. Anybody else? No? Okay.
Okay. One of, this item might be the one we spend the most time on, we'll see. But if 20 minutes from now, we're still on this agenda and that's okay. We're going to talk through the timeline and the process of the search. Now, we did that when we met you during what we call our pitch. You've also read about that in our proposal, but now we're really starting, we're starting it. And we want to make sure that you understand it deeply, that you're comfortable with what we're proposing. If there are tweaks to make, now is the time. What I'd like to do then is walk you through the timeline that you have in front of you. You all do have that in front of you, I think. And I don't want you to worry too much about the right-hand column yet. So, this is all a draft. It's a draft calendar. You might already be seeing dates like, huh, I don't know about that. Let's, I'm going to ask you not to worry about that yet because the way we'd like to do it is walk you through the process and then we'll go back and say, okay, do these dates work or what needs to be shifted? We built these based on our best thinking of the Beaverton District calendar and our calendars. We don't know the individual calendars of the board members yet. Does that make sense, board? So, we'll walk through the process without worrying too much about the dates as they are. Okay, so, we are, we are at October 14th, the board planning. You can worry about that date because that's a real date. That's happening as we speak. Our plan is, the next thing that will happen is November 3rd to 19th, there will be a high level of community engagement. What's not written in the calendar, obviously, is the large amount of work that will happen between now and November 3rd to get ready for that. As the chair spoke, there's surveys going out, there's focus groups that are being created. There's many pieces to that. But from November 3rd to November 19th, we three and the Beaverton community will be very involved in collecting the input of the focus groups. As a reminder, there's two key outcomes to that work. One is really to school us up on this point in time in the Beaverton School District. We've each worked with you before, but at this moment in time, we want to learn as deeply as we can, the state of things, the perspective of things, what's working great, what are some of the complexities? And so, we'll get that through, so that's one of the outcomes, is for us to be schooled up so that we later on in the process, shortly thereafter, can go out and be tremendous representatives of you as we recruit candidates. That's one outcome. And the other outcome is for the community to inform the board, and we're the messengers, for the community to inform the board about the dreams and aspirations of the community of Beaverton. And we would like that to be as broad and vast as possible, that as many as possible, perhaps all, members of the Beaverton community could somehow inform the process and share with you, board, what is most important to them as you make this very consequential decision. So, those are our two outcomes for what we call the engagement period, which you see as the, you see it's in the line that says focus group meetings and online survey window. When that finishes on November 19th, there's a period of time at the end of November where it's like in-between the lines, you're not seeing it. That's when we three will take all the information that we've received, we pour over it, we spend time on it and we create a document called your next superintendent criteria. We make that as a draft. I want to check, is this, am I echoing or only in my own ears?
Back up just a little.
Back up a little bit? Okay. Sorry, thank you. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. You shouldn't elbowed me. Okay. Okay. So, in early December, and we, you'll see that we wrote two dates in early December with possibly December 9th being the second one. We will present, there's two, sort of two readings of that document. There'll be a work session to be scheduled where you will actually, you'll take what we have, we'll say, hey, board, this is your document, we are the messengers, so we're bringing you our best thinking, but it's your document and you'll wrestle with some of that and you'll give us feedback on that. And then we'll come back to a second meeting with a hopefully near-complete document, which you still will have an opportunity to edit, review. There will be public testimony welcome in this important document. At the end of that meeting, which we've, again, this is where we don't worry about dates at this moment, but for purposes of just ease of talking, that would be hypothetically a December 9th meeting where you would approve, ultimately approve, this next superintendent criteria. And that document is our marching orders for what we are going to look for as we seek out incredibly talented folks who might consider being your next superintendent or might consider throwing their hat in the ring to be your next superintendent. Once that document is complete, we're kind of ready to start recruiting. So, you'll see that in our, in our draft, the recruitment window starts just shortly thereafter. We do like to get the word out before the winter holidays, so we're intentional about if everything aligns and if the calendar of the board works that way, we'd like to get the word out by mid-December. I see some board members nodding. It is a time of year when very busy people, even though there's busyness for those celebrating holidays, there's also sometimes some downtime where folks can actually carve out time to work on a, work on an application. I should say, our application, I think, is both sophisticated but not incredibly time-laborious because we do not want to dissuade people from applying who are incredibly busy but super talented and they might have three hours, but they don't have 30 hours. So, we want to make sure that we don't dissuade folks. And so, we carve it out that way. It will go until our proposal is the middle of January, January 14th. And let's talk about what happens on January 14th. So, January 14th, the window closes. Now, at that point, up through January 14th, the three of us are, we're seeing applications that they come in. We're chomping at the bit. We don't wait till the 14th to look. We certainly wait till the 14th to make any decisions, but we are excited, we're checking in, or somebody we spoke to hasn't yet applied, who we think is a strong candidate, we might reach out and say, hey, just want to let you know, there's three more days. A lot of the folks who will apply will have already been in conversation with us and some won't, right? So, some are folks we've reached out to or they've reached out to us, we've had conversations. And inevitably, in every search, there's folks who apply that we've actually not had contact with and all of those applications are treated equally. After the 14th, and usually we do it the very next day, but let's just say, within a day or two, Kathleen, Kristi and I are poring over the applications and we are looking at the applications on one side and we're looking at your next superintendent criteria on the other side. And we're having many conversations, some by email, some in person or virtual. We want to, our job during that time is to identify the candidates who most reflect what you've identified as your highest-level criteria. And in a search, I'm going to throw out some numbers just for purposes of talking, obviously none of us are clairvoyant. So, just for ease of talking, it's always nice to throw some numbers out. So, I'm going to throw some numbers out. I'm going to say that 35 people are going to apply to be your superintendent. And sometimes board members say like, you know, can we get 50? Can we get 60? We're really focused on top drawer candidates applying. That's what we want to see. So, we're not as concerned about raw numbers. 35 is a good number. We could probably get 50 or 60, but much more important to us is how many top drawer talented individuals who are really viable, potential leaders of Beaverton. That's, that's what we want. So, let's say there's, what did I say, 35? Let's say 35 applicants. We are reading every application and at the end of a day or two of huddling, we have agreed on 12 that we think are the highest sort of correlation with your criteria. Now, we, it's not our job to weed out everybody. That's not our job. But it is our job to provide you some guidance around what we think are the folks who are most sort of elevated in terms of their connection to the next superintendent criteria. So, we will then move forward with the 12 that we think are your, I'm going to say top drawer folks, and we will invite those 12 to participate in a, in a virtual interview with us. That's a true interview. It's not a candidate talking to a screen. It's a candidate talking to one of us. We videotape that. You'll have access to that. We also will conduct a single telephone reference check at that point in time. Now, this is early in the process, right? The candidates have just finished applying. We're not at the finalist stage, so we believe that to be honorable toward candidates, that's not a time that we just call their boss, right? Like, that's a little early in the process for that. So, in the application, we do ask each candidate to identify a single person with whom we could call right now, like, as soon as you've submitted the application, who's somebody that we are allowed to call. We say we would like, if possible, it to be somebody who has seen you from a supervisory, supervisory-ish perspective. We're not hard and fast about that, but that's what we'd like to see. And so, and so, those are, those reference calls are self-identified by the candidate. So, I said that we would interview 12, these are all hypothetical numbers, 12 candidates. We would share with you the video and we would also transcribe, we would write down as we're talking. And one thing about us, whatever faults we have, we are all really good at typing. So, we are, right? So, you will see very comprehensive, almost verbatim transcripts of telephone reference calls, one on each of those 12. And we will, so let's go back to the calendar. So, the window closed on the 14th. This is the work we're doing, the first two or three days is to identify those 12 and then to actually invite them for interviews and conduct the calls. And we're moving really quickly because by January 19th, we want to have the interviews start to happen with us. And maybe even more importantly, by the 28th, this is hypothetical date, this is a really important date, whichever one you choose. Let's say that the 28th is the presentation of the slate. Okay, board, this is where you get involved. You actually get involved prior to the 28th. So, on the 20th, you're going to meet and have a very rich discussion about these candidates. But you've already seen the applicants, so let's dial back in time. Let's say a week or so before the 28th. Let's say around the 21st. We don't usually put that date in our timeline, but let's just say on the 20, January 21st, we will send you a confidential link. It is only for you, it is only for the seven of you, nobody else sees it, no staff people see it. So, on January 21st, you get this link that invites you to view all 35 applications. And you will see from us, here are the 12 that we think are the highest in terms of correlation. But board, you may look and we invite you to encourage you to, if you'd like, read all 35 applications. Typically, in a board of seven, some of you will read every application and others will say, no, I'm, I'm good with the 12 that they recommend. You each get to make your own decision. And you get to choose from any of the 35. So, I accentuate that and I will also say that in the years that we've done that, I can only recall one time when a board identified a candidate that wasn't among our recommended. And I'm actually happy that I can say that because we honor that. So, so, I remember that distinctly where our board member said, what about this other one and why didn't you? And we explained why they didn't and they had a conversation and they said, we want to bring that person forward. So, we went back quickly to do the reference check and the preliminary interview with that candidate too, so that everybody's on a level playing field. So, that is an option to you. Typically, you will choose, typically the decisions you make will be from the recommended, but there's certainly no obligation to do that. So, let's say on, we meet now on the 28th. We do that in executive session or Blah allows us to do that. Only the seven of you and the three of us are in that meeting. It's really important that all board members are present, so we want to find a date. It's usually a two-hour executive session where you can all be here. And you've had a week to review materials. And we'll also share with you some tools about how you might assess those candidates. And we were a rich and robust conversation on the 28th of January and at the end of that meeting, you have identified six candidates collectively that you would like us to invite forward to be your semifinalists. I'm going to pause, one, because I want a sip of water and more importantly, I want to know if there's any questions that board members have at this point. Okay, great.
I have a, sorry.
Dr. Perez, I'm sorry. Thank you, Dr. Perez.
I have a question. If I already know I have some conflicts with some of these, or we usually send out like a little Google thing and we can kind of say, oh, figure out how many of us can make most of them or all.
Yeah.
So, I'll need to be there. I definitely want to be there, so.
Right. We want you there too. So, I'm hoping that we can spend some time, after we go through this the first time, I'm going to circle back to the timeline and see how many of these dates we might be able to agree to tonight. It would be great if we can get a lot of that done, but if we can't, then we would do exactly what you recommend, Dr. Perez, which is to use our Google Doc friends to do some calendaring. Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Kossen?
Thank you for that. I wrote down a few and I was like, all right, what's a good break? I'll go backwards. I think you mentioned right now, six, right? I think six semifinal, right? Was that proportional, like, depending on how many, or it's just six and then the 12 is just like, that's settled regardless of if we get 50 applicants or 500 applicants?
Yeah, great question. These are all hypothetical numbers. They're all hypothetical. Now, the six has to do with how many interviews you can comfortably fit and do a really good job interviewing and debriefing. We usually do it in a full day and I'll talk about that in a minute, but, so, that's the limitation. It's like, how much time do you have? But it's not like it must be six, it can't be another number.
Okay. Just wanted to again, that there's some proportionality there that we can take into account. I have a few questions going back through that, so hopefully that's okay.
Let's do it, yeah.
I think going back to when you talked about the focus group meeting, the window, right, between the 13th, 19th, what's the expectation? And I know you touched on communications and some of those logistics earlier, but what's the expectations of us, like, staying either engaged or apprised of that and potentially how, right, yeah?
You're on vacation from the focus groups.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're intentional about not having you there because we want folks to share most candidly and we find that they can do that when, in the absence of a sitting board member, if that makes sense.
Okay. And then what about, you know, just sort of, I know you have another addendum to talk about the focus groups, so I'll table some specific questions there, but, you know, any of the content collateral you're putting together on communications, about the surveys and being able to provide some, like, is there an opportunity for us to engage and provide some of that, you know, like, and what does that look like? Like, is that just to, right, like, you'll share whatever you're developing?
So, later in our meeting. Thank you. Later in our meeting, we're going to be asking you to think about important constituencies that we need to be inviting to the table for these focus groups. And then we're going to be working with the subcommittee and a couple of staff members to construct those focus groups really intentionally so we make sure that we're hearing from the broadest and deepest pool of people possible. So, if you can hold on to that thought.
Yeah, for sure. I was specifically talking about, like, if you're constructing a survey, for example, right? Like, what kind of questions you have and if you have any feedback to offer in terms of the framing or additional questions, what's the appropriate expectation there?
So, the survey is really a reflection of the same questions that we pose to our focus group participants. So, everyone has the opportunity to respond to the same, to provide us with the same information. And there may be connections that you have, you know, in your life as a board member or in other parts of your life where you can be a liaison to help push out the opportunity to engage in this survey. So, we'll also be talking a bit about that.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. And again, it's, it's really about as you're constructing it, doing that part, not the execution part, right? Like, absolutely understand that we're on vacation there and we are out, but as you're situating it, I think would be helpful to have some clarity on how and what access or, and maybe it is through the subcommittee or whatever that looks like, but that would be helpful to get clarity on so that we are able to provide feedback if anyone is interested or at least have some oversight and visibility into that.
Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I think those were.
I just want to add one clarity on that. Really, the survey questions are three, they're already designed and they're the same three questions in the focus groups, only we go down a little deeper because we have more time and people play off each other. So, you get a little different types of feedback from the focus groups and we keep it consistent because then it aligns into your next superintendent criteria.
Yeah.
We'll also provide you with sort of an overview document of, here's the strengths and challenges and the great things about Beaverton School District. So, you sort of hear what people said at a high level. As far as how we push it out, our goal will be for you to give us some feedback on places we should push things out to. And then the comms team will implement kind of those warm handoffs through, and they'll develop the collateral that, and messaging that goes with that.
Thank you. I'll circle back on the other part later. Thank you. Thank you. I'll circle back on the other part later. Thank you.
Okay, back to the timeline. Okay.
Let me help you again.
Thank you, Dr. Potter. Okay, so we are returning to the timeline. It's now hypothetically January 28th, and you have identified six candidates to bring forward for semifinalist interviews. We strongly recommend those semifinalist interviews are virtual. One of the great advantages is that you can turn that around pretty quickly. You're not paying for people for that point to travel across the country in short notice. You know, it might, it might already be obvious, but I want to state this. Once this calendar is finalized, this becomes very public, and every candidate is going to know when they apply, what the dates of the interviews are. They just don't know if they're invited or not, but they will know what those dates are. So there won't be surprises, and people who are obviously particularly interested and want, are going to block out dates just in the event that they have the good fortune to be asked to participate. Nonetheless, we typically turn that around in about a week, week and a half. And the day of the semifinalist interview is, as I was, I was sharing, when Director Kasim asked his question, is typically done in a single day. So I want to talk about that. That is the longest day in the process for you, Board. And it's a good day, and it's adrenaline, and it's long, and it starts at breakfast, and it usually ends at dinner. You get breaks. And, and we want to do a comprehensive interview process on each of those candidates you bring forward. The interviews are really kind of, if I may say, well-thought-out, and different kinds of questions, and different kinds of moments within each interview experience. And then we, we evaluate, or I should say, assess each candidate after their interview. That's how that day goes. So six is a good number. I wouldn't go that much higher, but you could. And what we will also do is, if you look at the very next row selection of finalists, so that's important. So if you picture a long day, and you've interviewed six candidates, and it's 7:30 PM, which it probably is, and we're asking you now to, to narrow your six to either two or three, or potentially four, but really two or three is a better number, but four could be, that's, that's a big stakes decision you're making, and it's late in the evening. And sometimes there's just a great energy by the board around certain candidates, and it's kind of, there's clarity, and sometimes not. So we always hold, in abeyance, if that's the right word, an hour, or possibly an hour and a half, hopefully the next day, so that you're not feeling like, oh, my gosh, we have to decide, and we're exhausted, and our brain's not in the best space. So we would hold sort of an extra meeting. We would post that extra meeting in case you need it, and you might, or you might not need that. So whether that's the 29th, or the, sorry, thank you. So we're looking at the fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh for potential semifinalist interviews, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth for that, sort of holding that follow-up if need be to make those decisions. And you, as a board, have rallied around three candidates that you feel are just, are just going to knock the socks off. So we, you finish that meeting, we get on the phone with all six candidates, and we, we share the news, and we give a status update. And, and to the three who are, who are coming forward, the first thing we do is we say congratulations. And the second thing we usually say is, we need about 45 minutes of your time later today or tomorrow, because there's a lot of stuff we have to go through about your visit to Beaverton, and all the pieces to that. There's a number of pieces. Well, I won't get, like, I mean, some of those pieces are more granular and don't really warrant us having a large discussion right now, but some are not granular. So let's talk about what happens. You've now identified three finalists. We have, we have communicated that in, let's just pick the last day I see there, February 8th, we have made those phone calls. And again, they've blocked that out on their calendar. So those three candidates may live close to Beaverton, they may live in Beaverton, and they may live across the country, or potentially in another country. So they're, one of their first, we might call it granular, but it's big. They got to get, they got to get to Beaverton in eight or nine days. Let's look at what's next on the row. The next row is February 13th, again a hypothetical date. The board is not part of this event. This is your confidential community panel. It could be panels, as a, I think we talked about it during your pitch, but let's just remind. So, so a group of 12, 12 is a really good number, 12 individuals who represent a microcosm of Beaverton, students, parents, family members, teachers, staff, administrators. Who did I leave out? Is that everybody? Is that all the constituents? And you'll, and Board, you will have an opportunity to inform what is the composition of that panel. And sometimes boards want there to be two or even three panels, so you would multiply 12. Sometimes we each run a panel, so that could be up to 36. Those individuals are largely selected, our recommendation, largely selected by lottery from within the constituent group. So it's an opportunity for anybody in the Beaverton community to raise their hand and say, I'd like to participate. Maybe I'm super active in everything Beaverton. Maybe I'm not. Maybe I really want to be involved, because I haven't been engaged, but I'm still a member of this community. So we recommend that most of those slots are lottery within the parameters that you set. Clearly, one of the parameters is going to be, what role are you? Are you, are you staff? Are you student? Are you parent? Are you community member? And there are some other guardrails or parameters that you, as a board, might identify. So we can talk about that another time, but typically, there are some other things. You're wanting to make sure that we have diversity around with respect to the 12, or the 24, or the 36. Leading up to that, we also typically work hand-in-hand with your communications department to make sure that your community knows about this opportunity. Whether or not people raise their hand or not, we want to make sure that the community recognizes the honor of this opportunity, and that anybody who might want to be considered has an opportunity to throw their name in the hat to see what happens. It's one of, I think, one of, not only one of the differentiators, but really one of the things that I think is one of the most powerful moments of this experience is, because each of these panel members will really be invested. They are going to interview each of the candidates, they're going to study the materials, they're going to engage with each other, which is just a very beautiful thing to see happen, particularly our students engaging with staff members and kind of how that looks. But really about the, the data that comes out of that work. And it's not necessarily people you know well or your best friends, right? It's a microcosm of your community, provides really rich data to you that you will get. You'll get it in a couple of different ways. We'll talk about that later on. But you will get, you will get a lot of material out of that. The confidential community state panel is not there to narrow the field, and they're certainly not there to tell you who they think you should choose. Their job, and we're very clear with them, we're very clear that your job as Board is to make the decision. Their job is to inform you of what they see as kind of, where these candidates are more highly correlated to your next superintendent criteria, and maybe in some places where a candidate might be less so. That's happened, that's the confidential community panel. And by its name, you probably can already tell, those individuals have signed confidentiality affidavits. They are not to, outside of the committee, they are not to share any information about the identity of the candidates, about the deliberations. If they were to come to you and say, hey, you know what, I got to tell you, you would say, no, you just signed a confidentiality affidavit. You can't share with me anything. And they, they take that, they take that very seriously, quite honestly. We don't have that happen. They take that role very, very seriously. Okay. So, and that's virtual, that's, that's virtual. We potentially put that on the, on a Friday, so candidates can participate in that virtually, and then they would make, and then their travel plans would probably happen over the weekend, or early the next week. One thing I hope, again, we're not settling on any dates at this moment, but I'm hoping that tonight we will be able to at least settle on the interview week. That's a week that we need y'all here. Interview week, so now the candidates have completed their confidential stakeholder interview. Have I left anything out?
No.
Good.
And now they're coming in person. And you are going to have some real quality time with each of those candidates. You're typically going to meet with them for at least two to two and a half hours each. There's different ways we can structure that week, depending on the schedules and needs of board members. Sometimes we do them over two days, and board members are committed to two full days. Sometimes, I'd say more often, board members prefer not to do that model, and it's like consecutive afternoons or consecutive evenings, one candidate each day. I want to talk, I think the last thing I'll talk about, well, one of the last things I'll talk about, so now I want you to picture that we are on hypothetically a day during the week of February 16th. And you are going to meet Candidate C tonight. You have, you are coming to this meeting, so Candidate C is going to come to this interview, you're going to come to this interview, and this candidate, by the way, has already had a preliminary interview with us scripted. We don't go off script in our preliminary interview. Everybody gets the exact same questions. They will have had a semifinalist interview with you. Remember that, that long day from breakfast to evening? We will build those interview questions for semifinalists based on what your criteria is. We will ask you to, if you have ideas. But once we build those questions, those are the questions, and we'll, we'll hold everybody to that. We will ask every candidate the exact same questions. We'll drive home the importance of not even tweaking a word, right? You want every candidate to get the same thing. They will then have the confidential community stakeholder interview, again, a scripted interview. They have now been through three scripted interviews. This is the time, the opportunity you have to go off script is in your final interview. They've had enough of the scripted that we, as HR professionals, feel like we've covered that, and now you have an opportunity in two to two and a half hours to spend some time really getting to know them and asking questions that are specific to them. And mind you, you have a whole lot of material to draw from in figuring out what you want to ask these candidates, because they've been through these three interviews. You also have their application package. You've also been Googling them, as have we. Like, you've got a lot to come to the table. And so before you meet Candidate C tonight, we're going to spend an hour with you in what we call our study session. And in our study session, you're all coming to the table to say, all right, I want to know this about this candidate, and I want to know that about that candidate. We heard them say this, but let's drive home that one. So it's a much more organic kind of conversation with the candidate. As I say, it's usually about two and a half hours, and usually about two hours are what I just described. It's you asking questions specific to that candidate. And usually, there's a half hour that's a different, a whole different, sort of more of a performance task, where you're seeing a different side of the candidate. So, and that, we would want the board, or at least the subcommittee, but hopefully the whole board, to inform what that might look like. So you're seeing, you're having different opportunities to experience this candidate. Okay, so two and a half hours, that will fly by. When it's finished, you will wish you had more time with the candidate. It's like that. We'll be here on the side of the room if you need us, but you mostly won't. You'll be focused on what you're doing. And let's say we have that model, where each evening, for three evenings, you're meeting one of the candidates. Finish that, the next morning, we're going to get together and deliberate, and see where you're at as a board. And at that point, we're looking to help facilitate a sort of coming together around a candidate. Sometimes that's more quick, sometimes it's a little less quick. Occasionally, a board says, we need more information. We're kind of stuck with two candidates. And we say, great, let's talk about what, what else you need. And...
So I want to add...
Thank you. Okay.
In between the semifinalists, you've chosen your finalists and your finalists' week, that's when we conduct, conduct the more in-depth reference checking.
Ah, thank you. I did leave that out. Thank you.
And the, our proposal is that you do that, because we think there's all kinds of value in you hearing directly from people as board members versus us doing it and you reading what we wrote. There's some nuance in hearing people's voices that you can really learn a lot about your finalist candidates. That being said, not every board member has to do reference checks, depending on your time. And if we don't have enough time available from board members, we will step in and help you do the reference checks. So when we get to a little further down the road, we'll have that conversation. But we'll help you find the contact information. Some will be off their list, some will be people we've looked at. We'll do the research from their district. Maybe they didn't list an HR director, but we'll say, hey, you should call this one, too. But we'll organize it for you. And then whoever has the time to make calls will, will give you a reference checking form to make those calls. So that happens before finalist's week, and is one of your many pieces of data.
And can you just accentuate your, sort of, that the candidates don't choose who we call?
No, the candidates do not choose who you call. There's, sometimes there's a couple on their list that we haven't called yet, that we'll say, okay, should we do this? But we're generally picking out like positions. So if they are a district superintendent, we might pick the CFO from the districts they serve across all your finalist candidates, and the HR directors. And then we might go, hey, we should get a building principal. Let's grab a building principal from each of the districts. So we will randomly grab...
And we don't ask the candidate to tell us which principal. We tell the candidate which principal we want to talk to.
Yeah. Thank you.
And Kathleen?
That's what I was...
Okay, thank you. So, and the other thing that's happening, thank you, my, my, my fellow, what are you, my friends, my associates, my colleagues?
Teams.
The other thing that's also happening is, an investigative background check is also happening at that time, per your request, but typically, boards want an investigative background check on each of their finalists. So that is through a investigative firm that goes deep into criminal background and registries of all sorts of things, and transcript verification, those sorts of things. So both of those things are happening. Once you land on where there seems to be, so the board, of course, you know better than anybody. You're not voting in, in executive session. But if there, but to the point that there's energy around a lead candidate, then what happens is, two board members move forward with negotiating a contract with that lead candidate, based on parameters that have happened earlier, which we did not talk about, but I think you know you're going to have a conversation about salary in the coming weeks. So with those guardrails that have already been established in open session around what the board collectively thinks the salary of the next superintendent should be, two board members will then enter contract negotiations with a lead candidate. The next meeting that happens is the meeting where the board votes in public on approving that contract.
And that's the first time the person's name is announced?
That is, that is when the public knows for the first time who the lead candidate is. That's correct. There's a piece to that about confidentiality of finalist names, which we'll get to a little bit later in the agenda. All right. So before we return to do this topic again, just looking at the calendar dates for a few minutes, and I promise that part will not be as long as the part I just went through. Are there any questions from the board about any of those pieces?
If nobody's going to ask that.
I'm going to ask one quick question. And, you know, the focus group meetings, you did mention that the board members are not in there. After it's done, are we given that data? We are, not just the selection criteria.
What you're given is a synthesis?
What you're given is a synthesis of all the engagement data we've collected. And we share out the, kind of the high-altitude findings for each of the questions we ask. So we see what themes emerge. What are people saying about what's going really well in Beaverton, things they're proud of, things that's important for us to make prospective candidates aware of. We'll also come back to you and say, in a general fashion, not attributable to any person or group, here are some things that people identified as challenges. And most of the time, what we hear is not going to be a surprise to you. You've heard from your, from your public or your staff about those same challenges. And then we'll also say, here are the qualities and the experiences, the lived experiences, the professional experiences, that people who engaged in the focus groups and responded to the surveys want us to incorporate into the draft next superintendent criteria that we bring to you. So I hope that answers your question. We, we retain all of the information that's collected, and in, we, we find that making sure participants know that the conversation is a confidential one, and that we aren't ascribing names to certain comments, it really, it does encourage people to be very forthcoming, and we get the best possible input.
So, so the synthesis is the survey and the focus group? It's not like, okay, this focus group came with this synthesis, or this...
On occasion, we might say, if something is noteworthy, if there's a particular, say, a multilingual group, who they have a very different perspective than what we've heard from, from other participants, we make sure that you hear that, too. You know, either this group is, wants, wants the board to know how well-supported they feel by the liaison who's working with them, or they're really challenged in a particular way, and it's important for you to be aware of that. So...
That helps, because...
Okay. The other thing I want to say before moving on is, the conversations we're having with you, those three-on-one conversations, are also part of... those three-on-one conversations are also part of, part of that engagement synthesis. So you probably have picked up, we're asking you some of those same questions in our conversations.
Dr. Trong?
Thank you. I think I just have some clarification between the group, the focus group and the confidential community panel force. Then I have a question on that. So my understanding is on the focus group, when you give us the list of, you know, people that you would be checking in with and the selection of those group would be referred by us or elect, or lottery or volunteer. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And then the, and the confidential community panel is also the same? Is that correct, the selection?
So there's parameters that... Parameters identified in terms of you'd like to hear from two students, you know, X number of licensed staff, classified staff person, so on. So those will be identified by, by role. And then most often, because there's a lot of interest in participating, there's a lottery that happens. There may be particular people, like this person has to have a seat on that panel and we will defer to you if there's someone you really want to make sure is, is present for those panel confidential...
Perfect. The reason why I'm asking is because there will, like you said, there'll be many people who are interested in seeing the seat. And many of these people might be in from the same community or same voice or same focus group. And some of the people who really need to be in the focus group don't have a voice. So how do you choose the people that is not overlapping in roles? Meaning, for example, the same schools, same zone? Or has been already in the focus group? You know, so that there's really a true balance instead of who has the strongest or who has the most members out there that can get into both groups. Thank you.
Yeah, so you as board and likely will, the best way to do this, especially for the focus groups, is going to be through your subcommittee. You're gonna, the, the whole board is going to give us input on the type, the members that should be included, the groups that should be included. But the subcommittee then is going to give us parameters. So you're going to say, if we have two parent focus groups, you're going to say, we want to be sure there's a parent from every zone. We want to...
You're talking about the subcommittee, the confidential stakeholder committee?
I think she's talking about both.
Okay.
Yeah. You're, so you're going to give us parameters. We want a parent from every zone. We want a school administrator, a staff member to include all the zones. We want this sort of demographic representation. And then we, when we go out to solicit input of all the people that say, hey, sign me up, they're going to give us some demographic information. Then in that lottery process, both for the focus groups and for the confidential community panel, we're going to, oh wait, we've got one from zone one, the next person that draws is from zone one. Nope, we got to go to the next person. So we, that's that, the lottery is structured based on your, your kind of parameters around demographic zones, type of groups they represent.
Thank you. That's your voice in stacking, so thank you.
Dr. Potter and then Director Costin?
I just wanted, I'm new to this process and I, I feel sometimes a tension for these big positions to balance transparency for our community and then also protecting the process because some of our top candidates may not want to let their current community know that they're looking until it's a real sure thing. How, can you just talk about, how do you balance that transparency with our current community and protecting any unnecessary disruption with another community?
Sure. That's a great... Thank you. Great question. It's actually a little further on our agenda if you're okay with that. It's, it's on number nine, but it's an important question. Are you okay if we, if we hold off till we get there? Thanks, Dr. Potter.
Quick clarifying question about the community panel. I know you mentioned there could be multiple panels if you wanted. But is the expectation, if there is a panel of 12, they're meeting with, say, if there are three finalists, they're meeting with all three, the same panel? That, that's, okay.
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure that that was, okay, thank you.
Okay, that's...
Okay, thank you, board. Let's take a few minutes to see if we can calendar some dates. That would be great. Let's see what we can do. And these are going to be, of course, only the dates that impact board calendars. So, so let's look at the fourth row down. Am I right? The fourth row down, which is the presentation and adoption of Beaverton's next superintendent criteria. You do, I believe you do have a board meeting on December 9th already, which would be an ideal time to do the final approval of that document. And Chair Garg, I, I know you're also out of the country. Lead, prior to that, 9th. You'll be back for the 9th. You will be gone for probably two weeks, I think, or so, prior to that. Is it possible? I do think we probably need to have the initial meeting sometime during that time. I would, I would wish and love if you could do that. That would be amazing. I think we were hoping for December 4th.
Yep.
Is it possible, board, on Thursday, December 4th, to schedule a work session?
What time?
I, I should be able to, but I'm not. I might be traveling. If I'm traveling, then I can, but I should be able to.
I, I am traveling on that day.
I cannot do that day either.
I can do...
Okay, sounds like there's...
The 4th is...
I wish I was traveling.
Sounds like it's out.
It sounds like the 4th is not good. So Dr. Trong, Dr. Carpenter, not, not optional during that day?
Not optional for me.
December 4th, right?
Okay, yep.
Right.
9th I'm here.
What's that, Chair?
9th I'm here, so 9th is okay.
What's our next choice? Would that be the 5th?
The 3rd is...
Third or the 5th?
Yeah, the 5th is a Friday.
But we, could we still do it?
We could do it, yes.
Can we do weekend? No.
Yeah.
I am at a conference that I'm flying on the 4th and I will not be available 5th, 6th, 7th. And I'll be returning, traveling on the 8th.
And even if we found like a two-hour block in there, that...
It's a really important, all-inclusive kind of thing.
Okay.
I could do the 3rd.
So, so I guess we're to the 3rd.
I can do the 3rd.
I tried the 3rd.
Oof, great.
I'm not sure.
You're not... Oh yeah, we don't know about Justice.
We can't see him. You can see him?
We can't see him.
Oh, y'all can't see me. I can see you.
Justice, so good to see you.
Is December 3rd okay for you, Justice?
How long and what time?
I'm scrolling on my calendar. It should be in my brain, but let me get over here.
I can't after 5:00.
After 5:00?
Yeah, ideally 5:30, after 5:30.
And just to clarify, this is like a pre-meeting before the December 9th meeting where we're just like, hey, we have information about the, and then sometimes that on the 9th, we can approve it.
Yeah. Yeah, we want you to see it, wrestle with it ahead of time.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Sometime after 5:00.
Yeah, the 3rd work, the 3rd in the evening after 5:00 works for me. I should be here.
So we'll...
I think it should be okay for me.
Okay.
It's 5:30 AM in the morning there, but it's okay.
Well, time change, so it would be 6:30 hopefully, so you should be... And if you start at 6, then it might be 7:30, so...
Yeah, I'll make sure. It's okay. I think I'll be okay.
5:30?
5:30?
Whatever's going to work for you, well.
I'll just note that the board's regular work session time is 5:45. And if that time works, to avoid any confusion about when to come to the meeting, sticking with the same time can be helpful as well as for other people who expect that so they know when to tune in. But if board members aren't available at that time, of course, we can figure out a time that works.
So 5:45? Okay.
You say like, two hours, three hours, four hours, five hours?
We think 90 minutes. We think 90 minutes should be, should be adequate.
Okay.
I would, I would just like to add that draft criteria document is also going to be made available to the broader public and they will have an opportunity to submit their reactions and provide feedback so that that helps inform the final version that the board is reacting to approve on the 9th. And you'll also be accepting public comment in that meeting on the 9th prior to taking any action.
And the tricky part is going to be, it's, it's the Thanksgiving holiday before that week. So we're thinking posting the next, the draft on Monday, which really only will give till about noon on Wednesday if we're going to get the feedback synthesized and get it to you. So...
Just a, we do have a showcase on the Tuesday that week too. So just remember the commitment that week is. Second.
Okay, right. Yeah, we need, okay. Okay, board, great. Okay, let's move forward. Thank you. The next, the next event, if you will, that requires all board to be in attendance would be the presentation of the slate. Typically, that would be a two-hour executive session. Is it possible that January 28th to 29th could be, could work for a two-hour executive session? This is when you're going to come and identify your semifinalists.
So just, there is currently a retreat, board retreat, on the calendar for January 27th.
27th, right?
Yes.
And we, we were, we thought we should avoid that. I don't know if you want to couple those two together.
Just calling that out for whatever, yeah.
That's kind of what we were thinking.
If it's a 5:45 time, yeah.
28th is a Wednesday, 29th is a Thursday.
29th might be better for me.
Kind of either of those.
Which day are you traveling?
The funding is supposed to come from the federal government, so we don't know yet.
You might be free.
I might be free. So I think it would be safer to plan for the 29th if there's no difference for anybody else, but I could also make the 28th work.
Let's do the 29th.
29th, that's good. Okay, we got another date.
Okay. 5:45 on the 19th, on the 29th, January 29th, 5:45 PM. Okay, board, we are on a roll.
Two hours, four hours, six hours?
We now need a date that is totally clear on your calendar. We are happy to do that on a weekend or a weekday, but it typically goes from morning till evening. So if you look at the 4th, 5th, 6th and 7th, is it possible that we could find one of those dates that's agreeable to all of you? And it's virtual, thank you, and it's virtual.
6th, 7th are better for me because of work, but...
Yeah, we can do 6th or 7th. I can do the 6th and I think I can do the 7th. But the 6th would be my preference.
6th or 7th should work for me right now. A weekday if possible, being great.
You want...
But either day.
Did you say you want weekday or you don't want weekday?
Doesn't matter, it's up to you.
Either one's fine.
Either one.
Yeah, whatever, easier for other folks to be there.
Anybody else?
Right now, I don't have any commitment on those days.
Melissa, you have a preference of 6th?
I did have a preference for a weekday versus a weekend, but that was just my preference. But I can make either work.
I can take a vacation day on the 6th. It's good, but actually then you can rest on the next day.
I cannot do on the weekend.
Cannot?
Correct, I'd be out of country. And it has to be in person, correct?
I'm going to start traveling.
It has to be in the country, right? I mean, you, I mean, it cannot be virtual, right? I have to be here, right?
No, this is, this one is, this one's virtual. This one's virtual.
Oh, this one's virtual, okay. So the 6th or 7th is a, a big event for me. So the 5th, the 4th and the 5th is fine. I'd be out of the country, but I can do virtual.
Can you do an all-day virtual on the 6th?
It's a Friday, yes.
I think we're looking at Friday.
Friday, the 6th.
Let me look at the time, different, the times all different.
Who needs to sleep? It's just from 1:00 in the morning till...
It's going to be an all-nighter.
Some people are so beautiful, they need no beauty sleep, so...
Sorry, keep going, I, I will look. Yeah.
You want us to keep going, Dr. Trong? Is that what you said?
I'm sorry?
Do you want us to keep going? Is that what you said?
Yeah, keep going, I, I'll look at the time.
Okay.
And right now, I have to...
I'm in a couple of countries.
February 6th, Friday, February 6th.
And that's all day?
All day.
Okay, so...
Last time, sorry, last time we were virtual, like we were all together and then the person was virtual, which was kind of nice because we were all in the same room, kind of like for the all-day. I, I sort of enjoyed that because we just had conversations in the room, but we'll see if we're all virtual.
You're right, we were, weren't we? We were all in the same room, you're right.
Yeah, it, it was kind of cool, I thought.
Candidates were virtual or were the candidates?
So 5:45 here is 2:45 AM. It's fine, it's good.
No, this one, this one is 8:00 AM. 5:45 is the other one. This one is all day.
This is all day from like 8:00 in the morning?
All day from 8:00 in the morning.
Well, I... So you'd be up for 24 hours probably.
Yes, it's fine.
Wow, Dr. Trong, thank you.
That is commitment. So if we have at least one out of the country, you're suggesting then we all do virtual or...
What, what is the preference for everyone?
Feel like if it was valuable last time to be in the same room, well, like I, I don't mind being in person here and then everyone, whoever has to be virtual obviously is understandable.
I think it's, I, I agree that there's value for the board to be together, even interacting with the candidate virtually. Having said that, on the candidate's side of the experience, it's sometimes better for them to be able to see each of you discreetly, you know, in your own little window as opposed to trying to hear and see the group as a whole. So I don't know that it's a decision that has to be made right now.
Right.
But I think it's something we may want to grapple with before they're scheduled, certainly.
Let's do that, that's a great point. And let's, we don't have to decide that right now. It looks like we've landed on a date, which is, which is, which is the...
Fabulous.
We're going to try to do one more and then we're going to move on to the next agenda item. So if February, what did we just?
The week of February 16th for finals.
Right. Okay.
Do we have the, we have to go the next day or something?
Yeah, that's, we've still got to talk about, should we hold? If we're doing Friday, the 6th for the full-day interview, should we hold Saturday morning just in case we need to come back for discussion?
I'm sorry, that, this is a little bit complicated because I just look at the calendar, it's actually plus nine hours. So it's like, if I say, I was looking at on the 6th, we were talking on the 6th, but actually it's going to be on the 7th for me. I don't think it's going to work, so it has to be on the 5th.
So 5th, yeah.
So I think if you're doing 8:00 AM, then that's about 5:00 PM Friday, the 6th for you there, if you're nine hours ahead, so, which will go...
It's PM?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, it's, say something different in here, but, okay, then that will be fine. If it's the same day, it's okay. If it's the next day, then I can't do it. Thank you, Sai.
I think she's going to...
Yeah, yeah. But also like... Yeah, but also like, that means if it's a whole day thing, it's going late into the night.
It's going to go all night for you.
Because it's like, starting at five and probably going till about three, two or three A M. your time, yeah.
And that's Friday too, right?
Uh, that'll be like Saturday morning there, yeah.
Yeah. So probably the day before would be better. Sorry about that.
Okay. So the question is the fifth?
Yes.
But don't, aren't you? You're okay.
Fifth?
Are you okay, Karen?
I'll make it work.
Yeah, I'll have to make it work.
Oh. I'll, I'll make it work. Okay.
Yeah.
So fifth, I'll be holding for fifth then, okay.
When do you leave?
So it looks like there's energy around the fifth. Director Raji, are you able to do the fifth, February fifth?
Yeah, I can do the fifth. As long as we, it's got a delay now, so I can move other stuff.
Yeah, and then we have to hold two hours on the sixth then?
Yeah, probably, okay.
Is there a time that we are putting eight to ten, or nine to eleven?
Can we do it sometime when it's daylight for Dr. Trong? Like, it would be later in the day for us?
Literally.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What would work for you, Dr. Trong, if you had to, got to pick the time on the following day?
It's a, it's an all-day event on Saturday for me, so it starts like around eleven A M.
Saturday?
Saturday.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all the way to like eleven P M.
Could work, right? Sometime on the sixth?
So what time here on the sixth?
So, can you do Friday evening there, like at five o'clock? That'll be eight A M. Friday here, if you wanted to do it in the morning.
Yeah.
I know that's just a two-hour one, but that could work.
Now, I know who to go to when eight hours between countries.
So we've got.
A few times, yes.
February sixth at eight A M.
Three six, eight A M. to ten A M.
Okay.
Right? Hold for me.
Yes.
And February fifth is our all-day.
All day.
Perfect, okay. And that, that two-hour block is really a just-in-case block, so you might not need it, and you might not need two hours, but just in case. Okay, so Board, thank you. We have done a great job.
Don't you need two full days for the February sixteenth?
So let's, yes, thank you, thank you, Chair Garg. So, so if there's two different models, one is where you find two, so we're now on the final, on what we call finalist interview week, and there's two different models we could work with. One is where, for two full days, they need not be consecutive, you are interviewing candidates, and that's your, that's, that's the interview, and the other option would be consecutive evenings or afternoons. Do you, I, I don't know what, what feels better.
Is this virtual or in-person?
This would be in-person. We would need people to be in Beaverton. Let me actually get a little, let me just play that a little bit more. So if you think about, if you think about two full days, it's not like breakfast till evening. It's two full days, probably seven to eight hours each day, so a regular workday, or four afternoon type, or evenings for like four-hour blocks. And then, of course, we do need that one, that one sort of last piece, just like we just did, sort of have your deliberations. So it could be Monday through Thursday from five P M. to nine P M. and a Friday morning, or it could be Tuesday all day, Thursday all day, Friday morning.
Can I interject?
Please, Carrie Delf.
Tuesday, February seventeenth is Lunar New Year, which is one of the eight, eight holidays on which we've committed to not hold important community events. So if this is a time when we're going to have a, a goodly number of community members participating, that could, having it on that day could exclude some people from participating. And also Ramadan is expected to likely begin that evening.
Okay.
So which day are we at? Eighteen, twenty, twenty-one?
That wouldn't be right. Was this about Board members in particular, or large groups of individuals?
This is about large groups of individuals. If it's not a conflict for Board members, that's for the Board members to determine. If it is not a public meeting, if it's an executive session, then that would be fine if it's not a conflict for Board members. But if this is scheduling times when, you know, dozens of community members would participate in families.
So maybe we table this decision until we've had, maybe we table this, because the answer to your question sort of depends on where we are in.
Number eight.
Farther down.
No, excuse me, number nine.
Yeah. Do you want to jump to number nine now? Let's do that.
Well, the sixteenth, Carrie, are we saying the sixteenth would work, or that it doesn't work? Because it's Ramadan, Chinese New Year.
If this is just for Board members, then it's up to Board members to, I suppose, to identify whether it's a conflict for Board members, if it's an executive session and wouldn't be a public meeting, then that wouldn't be barred by our holiday practices. But if it's, if this is something where there are community panels involved.
This is a finalist interview.
The sixteenth would be fine.
So let's, Board, I think what we'd like to do is pause, because, Chair.
Can I just have a clarification? You said seventeen, she's saying sixteen. What's the date of the Ramadan?
Lunar New Year is on the seventeenth, and that is a date we don't schedule public events on, like, important, unmissable public events. And that is also the day, the seventeenth, that Ramadan is expected to begin that evening, kind of depending on the sighting of the moon. So the sixteenth does not have that conflict.
There's no school on the sixteenth as President's Day, so I just was wondering, that's what I said.
Okay, so you're, yeah.
The reason I said the sixteenth, if, I don't know what our Board needs, but like, that's the whole day where I don't work, is what I'm saying. So then I could be available all day if you need me. That would be easier than other days. But if I have to miss work, I could do the eighteenth or the twentieth, perhaps. It's just hard to miss work because we're missing, but it is my job to be on board.
So I think, just chiming in, right, like, I don't think the expectation with this is that it's a public, right, like, it's for the Board-only meeting with the candidates. So I think the lunar, like, I don't know if that poses, as for Ramadan, and like, I will be observing, so if we can schedule like time-wise, right, like, there'll be like, hey, sunset, right, need to break fast, and that would be the only aspect of it, but, okay, I'm sure we can coordinate around the time there. Thank you.
If, if it does not require public meeting, I can also meet on the seventeen. It doesn't bother me. We usually celebrate on the weekend now too, so.
So, let's take, let's, let's take a little bird walk for a moment, and we're going to jump down to item, agenda item nine. And the reason we're doing that is that will actually help us figure out where we go with that week in February.
So that's the parameters of candidate identification item.
Are you with me, Board?
Yep.
So, I think you all, I'm sure you all know that there are a couple of different approaches to the notion of, and this is really, follows up on Dr. Potter's comment earlier, the notion of identifying finalists publicly at the point of finalists. We're not talking about anything sooner than that. So when you think about our hypothetical numbers, and we said that hypothetically you landed on three finalists, what then happens in the public eye? Twenty years ago, virtually every superintendent search that got to the finalist stage announced their finalists publicly. In the days of print media, you would open up the Oregonian because it came to you in paper, and you would read who the finalists were. That is no longer ubiquitous, except in certain states where, where that's required by law, and it's not required by law in Oregon, so it's the Board's discretion. I don't think it comes to, it's a surprise to you to know that we, two things, one is Beaverton, and the last, at least two, and I think three searches, and I don't know about prior to that, has opted to not reveal names publicly. And I think you probably also know that we have a, a recommendation toward that. We also, I think, we're clear that we can go either way, and we do go either way. Some of your neighboring districts have said, no, we prefer to name them publicly. There are, there are a number of reasons why a Board, there are a number, there are a number of reasons, I, I would say, on both sides of sort of the continuum. But I would, I would make the argument, and I think, again, I, I think, I sense that you, Board members, you've been thinking about this already, certainly the pool of candidates is significantly impacted when a search is going to announce publicly the names of finalists, and particularly if you're looking for folks who are already seated superintendents, they are far less likely to apply for a job. It's just risky to them professionally. There are some other reasons too that we can describe as well. We think that the quality of feedback that you get actually in a confidential search is actually, it might be counterintuitive, is actually much richer, and really reflects diversity of community better than when everybody is aware of, of who the names of finalists are. You might say, well, why, why would that be? And our experience is that when it is publicly known who the finalists are, and you have a lot, and Board, you will have a lot of information about these finalists, if everybody also is weighing in publicly, it's, there is a tendency we have as human beings with voluminous information to listen to the voices that we typically listen to most frequently, our spouses, our partners, our family members, our close, our closest confidants, the people that we trust are the ones that will ultimately, potentially, it's hard not to, inform our voices. And so, as opposed to, if you think about the confidential stakeholders that we just described that are drawn largely by lottery, that you probably don't know individually, you probably don't even know who they are because we don't necessarily advertise who those folks are, becomes actually, actually a more, I think, honest representation of the voices. So there are some other ways you might think about it. I always want to be careful that I'm not over, I'm clear and open about the recommendation from the firm, but I don't want to say it in a way that makes you feel like it has to be that way. It's really a Board decision. So why don't we turn it over to you, Board, for any thoughts you have, if you want to deliberate with each other, if you want to ask us any questions? But it's a decision that, if we can make tonight, would be certainly helpful because it really impacts how we plan for the search.
So maybe first we can ask if anybody has a question about it, Director Costin.
I don't know if you can speak to it, or one of the Board members around, how did we do it last time?
Confidential.
That was, okay.
Maybe we can go by each person what they happen to be, and then we can just make a decision. Dr. Trong?
I think I completely agree with your recommendation, because I think confidential protects not just the candidate, but also allows us to have a fair look into who's out there, who are actually qualified to do the position, because we really want to focus and get the best candidate. And if, for some reason, they are, we are disrupting other district communities, that's not a good thing either, right? So, so I think that's, I would go for confidential, just so that we can get the best candidates out there. Transparency is already along the whole process, right? We are very transparent, and we will be transparent of the communication with the stakeholders, so therefore, we just, I, I would like to keep it confidential. Because during my time in education, I've been sitting in like two or three candidate, superintendent search, and actually, a couple of years now, I've seen transparent search, I don't think it came out well. So, thank you.
Dr. Varese?
Yep, I think you had said that the last three that you know of, we don't know before that, were confidential. I know that the last one was confidential. And I, I do, I, from your recommendation of an experience in, with the superintendents not having to name for their communities, and I hadn't thought about the part where you said people may or may not be more honest, like, just if they don't know that that person, in their recommendations of people, I do see how we are being intentional about including our community throughout the process. And I hadn't thought about until you mentioned the, the piece of, once it becomes public, then whatever our biases may be from getting information directly to us from many, many different spaces, as opposed to like following the process that's been outlined, could, could impact, could impact us. So I think I'm leaning toward confidential and understanding that we will have our community in this timeline as part of the process.
Thank you.
Dr. Potter?
I also am leaning toward the recommendation for the confidential process. The disruption to another community seems unnecessary, and I also recognize we were all elected to these positions, and everybody has a, our community has a very good understanding, I think, that one of our responsibilities as a Board, as elected members, is to make this decision, and the decision ultimately, as elected members, does sit with us, and it's a responsibility we all take very seriously. So I do, I feel, I would feel comfortable with the confidential recommendation.
Thank you. Director Costin?
I let go a lot of the same sentiments already shared. I, I think, again, aiming for, wanting for the, the best candidate, and, you know, just being, I think it aligns with where we need to be and want to be as a Board, so I think I would vote for the, vote for the confidential search as well.
Dr. Carpenter?
Yeah, I agree with everyone, and I also want to recognize that these superintendents that we're, you know, evaluating, and, and we're going to bring one of them on, are employees, and, you know, to disrupt their lives in their districts, you know, just, you know, we can center their communities, which is also true, but also just like these as humans that have jobs that they have cared about and nurtured, and to have that be disruptive to them as employees, yeah, I would support moving forward in the process that you've proposed.
Thank you. Director Raji?
The same, I mean, we go on it, but I'm very, one, I think, as outlined, there'll be lots of input points for community to, to feed into the criteria, to give input to sort of that, the confidentiality, or the confidential panels, I think will give good, and then also that, they've also elected us to make good decisions and have good judgment, and I believe we should exercise that, and I'm, I'm very concerned if we had a, a different process at that, only at that point, that it would create an opportunity really to harm someone who maybe is just trying to look at an opportunity to serve our community, you know, which I think is, would be incredibly negative if that were to occur. So I think this, I think that the confidential process is the way to go.
Thank you. I agree with your recommendation and the rest of the Board. We want to keep the applicant feel open and safe to apply, and we get good pool of candidates that way, so thank you. Confidentiality.
Thank you, Board. Okay, thank you. It seems like a strong consensus, and so I think what we ought to do, in the interest of time, we've landed on this week, I, Board, you've also did just an incredible job getting the calendar together. Rather than try and get through the minutia of which days during that week, or whether it's evenings or days, can we work with Carrie on like a poll of the days of that week so that we don't, so that we don't necessarily race to cover that? We know what week it's going to be, and then we can move to some other agenda items, and we'll come back and identify exactly the dates or afternoons, or however that works. Would that be okay, Board, if we stop short of making that final decision tonight?
Unless there's consensus around the sixteenth and seventeenth, which was discussed earlier, we can put together a poll and figure out Board members' best availability.
So I might have missed it, did you sense there was consensus around the sixteenth and seventeenth?
I was thinking maybe.
I know that Karen said sixteenth, and everybody else said seventeen. Maybe we can skip the seventeenth and do, do it on Thursday, maybe Monday and Thursday? Can we have space in between? Would that work for everybody else?
If we do evenings, that's helpful for me for work.
Okay.
On those dates, or I can.
So two evenings and one full day is our. Can we have space in between? Would that work for everybody else?
If we do evenings, that's helpful for me for work.
Okay.
On those dates, or I can.
So two evenings and one full day is what you're saying?
Or how many do we need? Four?
We really need, let's think about it, we need four slots, and then a fifth debriefing. So the four slots, think about those as either half-days or evenings. So you could do two evenings, and then you could do one full day, and that gives you four.
I think we should do a Google Doc, because I, yeah.
Okay.
A Google Doc, yeah.
The only thing, we do have a, I have a bond accountability committee on the 18th at night, but the other nights are all.
Okay.
Just because I haven't finalized my calendar.
Yeah, let's do a poll.
We'll do a poll. Wonderful. Thank you, Board. I'm going to turn it back over to, I think, Kristi.
So I, and I think I can help, hopefully, race us not too quickly through the next couple of agenda items, but I just wanted to be sure that we were all clear about the role of the subcommittee. So we have had one meeting with the subcommittee. They reviewed the agenda, gave us some feedback. But the way we're kind of seeing the role of the subcommittee, and I want to make sure we're all clear, is that the subcommittee, for the most part, will help do the work, and that they will keep you informed along the way, but also get your feedback along the way, and pass back to you the decisions that are yours. So here's an example: focus groups. We need to get to work on all the logistics of the focus groups, because that's easily a two-week job. So our proposal is that you, as board members, and I'll talk more about this later, will give feedback to us, and then the folk, the subcommittee will help us land on the parameters around the focus groups. So that's something that they will help us decide, and then they'll give you what, the results of that in a communication. The next superintendent criteria, we're not going to have enough time to meet with the focus group, so we're going to take that to the whole board, and it is a whole board decision. When we get to the salary discussion, the subcommittee might talk about it ahead of time, but they know that's your decision to make recommendations on, so they would bring that to you. The finalist week schedule, they could, they might propose the, what the finalist week schedule would look like, and the makeup of the confidential community panels, but they would bring that to you to give feedback on. So that's kind of how we're thinking about it, this back and forth between the two. We're also recommending that every business meeting, you have an item on the agenda that is the report from the subcommittee, so that they are keeping you updated officially along the way. It's worked well in some other large districts that have done this whole subcommittee, whole board. And the thing about the subcommittee, they will know deeply all the steps of the process. So if you're wondering, where are we in the process, you can also easily call a subcommittee member. So that's how we're laying that out, and hopeful that that's as you see it as well. So I just want to open it up for questions or any discussion about that.
I know this was a draft timeline, like if we could, with whatever the next version is, kind of highlight, right, that, hey, here are all board, here is subcommittee informing, right, like anything that would help so that we kind of know.
That's a great idea. Yeah. Okay. I want to make sure I'm given appropriate wait time. All right, so I'm going to go on to focus groups. So one thing, we've had the beginnings of a couple conversations. We've had a beginning conversation on focus groups with the subcommittee, and we've also internally pulled together your logistical team for implementing the subcommittee, or the focus groups. So we thought that was important to get that started, because there's lots of moving pieces with your 14 sub-focus groups. So a couple things we noted right away is that 14 isn't going to be enough for you for focus groups. So we're going to bump the contract without any additional cost to 18 focus groups, so that maybe we'll be able to stay within the 18, or maybe then you'll need to add a few more. But we'll start with 18 as part of our contract. So what we're hopeful for, for you to do, and Carrie has developed a Google form for you to give your feedback, we're hopeful as board members that you would give feedback onto the who. If you know a group that you want to be sure is either represented by, let's say it's a group that you really believe their CEO needs to be, so you say, I want this group, I'm just going to pick out the chamber, because it's an easy one, and everyone has a chamber. So you have a chamber of commerce, you want to make sure the business community is represented, and you want their participation in a focus group. Versus, you want to be sure that there's at least one focus group that's made up of licensed educators, classified educators, and administrators. So that's the type of feedback we're looking for from the board right now. If you just have the name of somebody in the community that you think, hey, I'd like to be sure this person is invited, you could put that in your Google form back to us as well. So I believe Carrie has that ready to go to get out, and we're hoping that you could have it out in the next, by like Thursday evening, so that we could go to the subcommittee with kind of a draft recommendation of what those focus groups would be. Remember, they're going to be, some will be appointed, so some you're going to say, yes, you need to meet with the superintendent's cabinet. And that, we're not going to do a lottery necessarily for a group of seven or eight people. Versus, you want licensed staff, we would open that up to a lottery process. And so each of those steps, if it's by lottery, takes a couple extra minutes, hours of time?
Hours.
Minutes, hours. So that's why we want you to give the, get the feedback to Carrie, then at the subcommittee meeting, we're hopeful that the subcommittee can then give us the parameters around the focus group numbers, selection, all of that. We've identified, you know, we know that you've got a student council, we, I don't think it's called that, Beaverton Student Advisory. We know that's a group of students that we can meet with. We know your equity committee is on our, we know what the calendar is for that. So we're already trying to kind of think about some of those groups. What you have in your packet is kind of a sample of the potential focus groups. So we're going to start with this anyway, but as you look at that, it will make you think of, oh, that, this community group, this group of local elected leaders, whatever it is, that's the stuff we want you to put in the survey to Carrie. The other thing, she says she always adds a question, is there anything else you want us to know? And so if there's something else around focus groups that you want to be sure, we, as human capital and the subcommittee knows, will take all that to them on Friday. So, we've also been visiting a little bit about how your multilingual department has a number of alliance groups there. So there's, and I think I have multiple, there's like about seven or eight alliance groups. We also believe that's a set of existing groups that we should either do by lottery or have individual focus groups. Last time, the multilingual department also led some of the focus groups for Beaverton, and we're going to meet with them to see if that's a possibility as well. I think there's a pretty good structure already of how they meet with some of your second language groups, and they hopefully will be able to do that, which then expands your focus group reach. And while it would be great if we could meet with them, they know the people that are employed with Beaverton School District, and they will more likely come to a focus group if they invite them versus us. So we're going to talk a little bit with your multilingual department to figure out how we can kind of expand our reach. And at the same time, we'll go to your multilingual department when we do the survey to really push out, to say, hey, would you, could you fill out this survey? We'll have a number of surveys, hopefully, that do need to be translated when they are returned to us. So we think of this as kind of the focus groups and the surveys together, and the more we can reach out and do the direct ask on both, the more response we'll get in both areas. So I'm going to stop talking and see what questions you have, or anything else you'd like to add, Kathleen.
I think that's great.
Okay.
Dr. Perez? So I'm looking at the list, and there's like, when I count, there's more than 18.
Yeah.
So I know we have to narrow down, is what I, is that what I heard you say, like?
We can narrow down with the subcommittee.
Oh, got it.
But if you have, if you looked at the additional options, said, oh my gosh, why? Private school representatives is a group we have to hear from, that, you should put that in the survey.
So just as a reference, last time, we had 30 focus groups. Thirty.
And we were already doing some brainstorming around, if you did like administrators, do you do school-based administrators versus by level? And do you, I think, of course, you want your union leadership in a focus group. But, so we've already talked a little bit about how you could combine some groups, and then you do it by lottery, and you get good representation.
Sorry to keep bothering you with that. Thank you for that. I'm going to try and contextualize some of my earlier questions, and I don't think I have like explicit questions, more just, hey, here is some things for consideration. I think one of the first things I asked earlier about, right, like, hey, what's the opportunity to engage, and maybe the subcommittee, you know, like, working with them to be able to have access to what these surveys look like and how they are, is just helpful to understand, and the context really, that, at least for me, is, as I've seen some of this play out, and this is just natural, like that game of telephone, right? And that's really where the, someone says something, someone hears something, and then when you surmise it to the question Chair Gargar asked earlier, right, like what kind of summary are we getting? And that's really where any kind of context that we can set up, right, that here is what was asked, here, like any additional, it'll help mitigate some of the affect that happens with that. And that's really, I think, top of mind for me with this, and that's really why I asked, like, hey, what are the questions, and how are they framing? I do also want to be sensitive, right, in terms of if we can be culturally aware and informed with the framing of the question, depending on which group it is, how we are asking it. It's not just a simple matter of translation, it is also about, hey, here is how you ask about this, and I would love for us to make sure that that's accounted for, and specifically, again, any culturally specific or relevant groups that there are. And, you know, so I look forward for the survey and can absolutely provide additional context or direction. And then, I know you mentioned earlier, right, like you'd work with the comms team to build some kind of communication plan. Again, I don't, I can obviously speak for everyone, but I think if we could have a framing where, as board members, we are, we have like a, an option to be able to like, hey, here's what board members can share out, whether on our social or email, all of that, like I would love for us to have an opportunity to tap in and be ambassadors, kind of reaching out and pulling in. And absolutely, a lot of times, you can just share out whatever the district has put in, but there is some value in creating something a little bit more targeted from a board lens and perspective, that, hey, we are here, this is what decision-making will look like, and we want to hear from you. So I'd love to sort of surface that and see if you could be thoughtful and intentional about that. Thank you.
I'm making a note of that. And board members, that is your role in the focus groups and the surveys, is being ambassadors. And could you have places that you will send things that they will listen to you, that they might not listen to the district when they send it in the same way?
Yeah.
So it takes, it kind of takes all of us to do that.
Thank you. And again, I think just layering on, right, like I know numbers, right, we have about 30% of the district population that has some tie-in into schools, and 70% that doesn't. So we also want to be intentional about that type of outreach, wherever, however ways that we can, make sure that we pull larger community that, again, might not have direct access into tools that are generally used for communications and all of that. Thank you.
Just clarification question for the online survey, it's only open to Beaverton residents, correct? Or is it open to everyone? Is it?
It's, I mean, it's a link on your, it's a link on your website, so presumably, anybody who has any connection to Beaverton could take the survey? But I want to, are there cautions you would want us to consider around that, Chair Garg?
I was just, that was a curiosity that I had.
Yeah. We don't, we don't ask, typically, we don't ask survey respondents to confirm that they are residents of Beaverton.
Okay. Because if we are becoming like an ambassador, we do it for everyone, anyone who wants to take part in that, they can.
Right. I mean, there's, there are folks who work in this school district who don't live in Beaverton, right?
That's true.
Or maybe they don't work in the district, but they work next door, and they're invested in the district, but they don't live in Beaverton, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's good to know. Thank you.
In the world of things go viral and online, we did talk about that in another district, how to protect. And I think where we landed was, we were watching the surveys to see, because sometimes you will get online trolls from way nowhere near Beaverton.
Right, we did do that, yep.
And so when the survey opened, we started watching just in case that began to happen. And I, we talked about even, you had to put your zip code in.
You put your county name in.
Put your county.
And that was, and we just checked, you know, we didn't rule anybody out who didn't put you right, that's a good, I forgot that.
Yeah, we put the county you lived in name.
So as long as it was close to that county, we assumed, I mean, we didn't kick anybody out, but we were looking for that as sort of an indicator if there were trolls, and we didn't really see any evidence of that.
That's a good suggestion. It's just one more.
Yeah, we could do that.
Question to add, if that's what the subcommittee thinks. Yeah. Is any, Dr. Trong, and then Dr. Perez?
Thank you, Director Kasim, for the culturally appropriate survey feedback, because that's really important. Not all groups are the same, you know, we communicate differently. So I appreciate that. Thank you. On going back to the process and the, how superintendent search committee work with the board, we would love to, like, for example, we have done it in the past, we meet and we send out the information to the rest of the board, and then we ask a recommendation from you. And I know that sometime we say, oh, you know, you have to get Jack back to us in 48 hours, but sometime we work on it, and we have like a short timeline. So you will always have time for recommendation or give us feedback after we come up with a proposal. So we will continue to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Perez?
I forgot my question. I will come back if I think of it.
It'll come back to you.
I'm already tired of this.
It'll come back.
Absolutely.
Anyone else have questions?
I, yeah. Got it?
Okay.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on in the agenda. I know you've got another very busy business meeting coming up, so I'm going to hand it off to my colleague Kathleen.
And this is a quick, a quick agenda item, and that is with respect to prospective internal candidates. We know that Beaverton School District has very talented leaders among its ranks, and there may even be some of those folks that are interested in applying for the position of superintendent. We want to be very clear that internal candidates are subject to exactly the same process as external candidates, and that is for a couple of reasons. We want there not to be an unfair advantage for people who are external to Beaverton. And should an internal candidate advance through the process and ultimately become your superintendent, they will have much more credibility, knowing that they were subject to the same, I'm not going to say grueling, but you know, intense, thorough process as the rest of the pool. So just would like to make sure that that's spoken aloud, and any internal people that are listening should be prepared for that. Let's see, we spoke about the parameters of candidate identification, board came to consensus, yes, please.
Dr. Perez has her question. Sorry, I remembered my question. Man, I'm getting old. I was just thinking about the questionnaire. I know in the past, we've, you have experience in how the questionnaire is put out, but in the past, in some other questionnaire world that we were in, we didn't, we couldn't tell who actually gave us that feedback. So I think it, you named some of the questions that you might ask people, but I would love to make sure that we have, like, whether it's a student or an educator, or to make sure we have, if it's a community member, or however, like there's multiple ways that you can then sort the information. I think that would be really important.
Yeah, we definitely have done that in some districts. Yeah, we definitely have done that in some districts, and it's, it's helpful, particularly when you have just such a luminous number of respondents, it helps make sense. Yeah, okay. Uh, so, any other questions at this point? All right. Next, Hank, I think you were gonna touch on item ten.
Sure, yes. Uh, so item ten is about, um, it's a question that we always ask, um, whether there is a, um, whether the board wants to establish a requirement that the next superintendent lives within the Beaverton School District boundaries. Um, also, this is something that was maybe a lot more common in, um, earlier years than presently, but let me just speak, if you will, just for a moment or two. Typically, a candidate who would be moving from somewhere else to take this role, and literally relocating, would be wise to move into the jurisdiction and move into Beaverton. It's usually not an issue that comes when somebody is moving from another state. It is occasionally, and certainly if somebody's already living in Beaverton, it's a moot point, but it is occasionally an issue when you select somebody who lives in a neighboring community, who has a home, maybe their kids go to school in that community, um, and wants to serve Beaverton, but doesn't necessarily want to sell their property, and, um, or maybe they don't own, but abandon their property, particularly when their kid's involved, that's often a scenario, but there can be other life scenarios that would make somebody reluctant to leave, um, particularly if, you know, they felt or that the commute was unreasonable. So, um, so that's the question. Is there a, a, a strong requirement in the board that the super, so it's important that we know, when we start the recruiting process, whether the person has to live here, or whether close by would be good enough. Um, and I just wanna know if there was, there were strong feelings, um, on the board that that'd be something that you would want to include?
Dr. Potter?
Can you operationalize what close by might be?
We, well, oftentimes, boards leave it purposely vague. Um, there are some boards that have put in parameters, like must live within the county. Um, but, you know, there are parts of Multnomah County that are very, very close to Beaverton, I think they're actually, part of Beaverton School District is in Multnomah County, right? So that, that takes care of that, yeah, no. Um, so, of, more often, it's left in general terms, but sometimes there are some parameters that are some strict parameters that are put in there.
Uh, Dr. Perez?
The only example that I can think of where, that you didn't quite mention yet, was when we did the research on superintendents of color, and how sometimes they may or may not feel safe, once they are pushing on the system, and their kids might be in the same district. So, um, providing them, like, our district or nearby district allows them to be able to push on a system with their kids not having necessarily to be in the district, but having somebody that would live like hours away would be challenging, I think, because there's so many hours they spend here. But it was just a consideration.
That's a really good point, Dr. Perez, thank you.
And yes, it happens, and it has.
And it might not just be for people of color, it might be for women leaders or any kind of leader.
Okay. I'm not sensing any board member strongly feeling like this is something you wanna include.
And it is just a question we sometimes get from prospective applicants, often in this circumstance that Hank described, where they may live nearby and have kids at another district and don't necessarily want to put the energy in if the district were requiring them, if the board were requiring them to move into district.
I'm gonna turn it over to Kristi Perry, I believe.
Well, I think we're down to the last question, which is Kathleen's questions and other things you, you, we might need to tell you, or things you think we should know, where we've gone for a full two hours here. So this is your time to say, is there something burning, um, that you want us to know? We have another, we have, yeah, we have multiple, um, other topics that we'll bring to you at other times. You know, we'll get you the finalized calendar, we'll talk salary range. I hate it when the allergies kick in.
Oh, yeah.
And the badge doesn't work. There we go. The allergy tickle.
Yeah, we've covered a tremendous amount of ground this evening, and we really appreciate your attention and engagement. Uh, we know you'll have questions along the way, and, and we encourage you to reach out and, and ask those. And as Kristi said, there are a number of things that, uh, we'll be dealing with a little bit later in the process. The, the salary conversation will be one that comes up, uh, soon. Uh, we definitely want to have your parameters identified, uh, before we open up the recruiting process. Um, we also will, at some point, get your, uh, get clarity around whether or not you wish to have a third-party background check on all of your finalists. We strongly recommend that as part of your due diligence. Uh, we'll also be digging in a little bit more to what the format for final interviews looks like. And, uh, sooner rather than later, uh, we hope that you will be, uh, considering a finalized calendar, a cleaned-up version of that timeline, and that the board can act to approve that. Uh, hopefully, it's your next meeting, your November fourth meeting? Is that, yes, okay. Yes, please.
Uh, you welcomed questions, which I appreciate so much. And so tomorrow, I wake up, I have a question. I email, subcommittee?
Carrie.
Carrie, okay, thank you.
Yes, the only time you're gonna email us stuff directly is when you have a candidate reach out to you, and you need to pass on a name or something to us, because we wanna keep anything about a candidate between human capital and the board. Questions, go to Carrie, and then she'll direct them to us.
You can, you can include the leadership, though, or, yeah.
Oh, yeah, however, whatever is your standard procedure for how you ask your questions, I think would be great.
So that the subcommittee is also in, knows, you know, the questions of the board, yes.
And when we answer, we'll be answering back to the whole board.
Yes, thank you.
Kristi's comment reminds me that I think at, at an earlier moment in time, um, the question about how to respond to a candidate came up, and we agreed that we would actually give some verbiage to you. So, um, I think we talked in principle about what you say, but we'll actually provide some verbiage, it might be easier, just cut and paste what we write, so we'll do that.
Thank you, Dr. Trong.
Um, I think when we met in, as subcommittee, we talked a quite a long time on confidentiality for the board, and who are involved as staff through the process because of the, due to confidentiality. But I don't see it on the agenda. Oh, did I slip through? So I was just wondering, uh, where are we with that?
So, um, questions and things about process, all can go to Carrie. When we get down to the, of looking at the slate of candidates, it is you, the board, and the, and human capital. When we get to executive session where you're interviewing candidates, it is you, the board, and human capital. So we, we, um, squeeze down information to just us, um, as we begin looking at candidates. And that's why even if you get somebody that asks you, um, about, um, being your next superintendent, that's why you give that to just us. Um, we have had boards, and we ask the boards to also sign confidentiality agreements, just as part of our process. If we're having community members on a panel sign, having you sign, you may need your board, um, executive assistant to do some of the work, um, to help schedule things. You may have that be her, you may have it be Carrie. If you, we bring somebody in like that, we'll also ask them to sign a confidentiality affidavit.
Dr. Perez?
I, I think I've had a little too many trainings for, um, board stuff with my work end here, but I just was thinking about if, how do we not have serial meetings when we're transferring information?
Yeah.
If we're going between subcommittee and Carrie, and then back out, so, not to, so throw a wrench in the process, but I just.
That's a really good point.
Um, just thinking about the last training I had yesterday, so.
So one of the.
I don't have an answer, I just know that it was.
One of the things that we have been doing is that when there is communication between the boards, it only comes to the leadership and Carrie, so there's only two people. And then subcommittee has to know, so when we have a meeting, then the whole subcommittee knows about it.
So just for clarification, it sounds like questions go to Carrie, Carrie, and you get CC leadership.
Right.
Um, and then we'll get information back to people. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Your subcommittee meetings are public meetings, too, so then when it's brought there, that's the full public meeting.
And Director Kasim?
Yeah, curiosity about, um, the, the serial meeting comp, uh, concern around this, and I'm thinking through this with you, Care, Dr. Perez, and wanting to, because we are going to be meeting, executive session, we can meet in this, um, for this purpose. And so, you know, I'm curious if those rules would cover some kind of communication, um, or if it literally is, this is the meeting right now, and we're allowed to do this, but then the emails or phone calls that hap, or more likely, the, the emails that can get forwarded, and all of a sudden, they're forwarded to a fourth person. Would that still be under executive privilege because it's, um, related to hiring a superintendent?
No, and it is a good point. Uh, always good for us to be thinking and cautious about serial meetings, which, uh, staff are always cognizant of, and it's good to have the reminder as well. Um, the board can meet in executive session for specific purposes during the superintendent search. Under Oregon law, that's pretty limited, um, it has to be after the board has adopted the timeline and a, a profile and, and plan for moving forward with the superintendent search. And it's not for, like, planning and logistics, it's for those meetings with candidates. It's when there's confidential information, such as candidate information involved. Uh, what we, when we're talking about email communications that can inadvertently lead to a serial meeting, um, or other communications that can inadvertently lead to a serial meeting, one person calls another, calls another, calls another, and now you have a serial meeting, uh, we do want to be careful to not set that up in an email context where a person emails three members of the subcommittee about something that could be considered deliberative, and you now have a quorum of the board who has been engaged in that conversation. Um, so we are cautious about that. Uh, and so if, if questions, um, are coming, like, through staff to, uh, human capital enterprises and then coming back, we don't want to be having an, an exchange and a back and, back and forth between board members or forwarding around in between. So, thanks for maintaining caution about that.
I, and I think the only other caution I would say is that the Government Ethics Commission just did come out with a case, um, against City of Salem for, um, the counselors who were having multiple phone calls and text messages, um, around a decision around their city manager. And they came out against, um, I think it was the mayor and one of the council members, like, don't quote me on the outcome, but they did find there was a violation of the public meetings just by phone calls. So when we get in that deliberative phase, we're deliberating together. Um, and between night one and night two, you're not gonna call another board member to say, what'd you think about that candidate? Um, and it was, um, a pretty clear violation by the City Council in Salem, so.
Director Kasim?
Just a quick question, going back to what you had said about, um, recommendations check. Uh, would that be something, I, I understand you said, hey, we can do that, or participate in that, lead that. What level of, like, besides teeing up, here is who to call and all of that, support can we anticipate? And I don't know, like, if, again, it could also show up on the, the timeline in terms of when to expect and what type of thing, you know, commitment that might be, that would be helpful.
We will give you a template, and you're, you know, we find that board members like to use that. Um, and you can tell us if there's something that's not on there that you would love to know, and we can incorporate that into a revision.
Thank you.
Dr. Trong?
Thank you. I have a same question along the line of the reference check, if the board, we were gonna call for reference check. And I think this is an HR, a question, because when you do reference checks, as I understand, is sometime we have the same questions. So that is fair. So you just mentioned something that I kinda like, oh, so not the same questions? So, but that's, that's one, but, but my original question was actually, uh, on reference check as well? Is that when we, uh, as we call with the reference checks, and we, what's the process of that, after that? Do we write it up? Do we send it to you? Or what happened after the process of reference check? Because I think, uh, it's, as I shared before, that I thought sometimes it's, when you do reference checks also, can be biased, and I was just wanted to make sure that we minimize that as much as we can, um, so.
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, let me speak to that if I can. Um, so I, absolutely, it's the same questions, every, and so we will give you a script, and you're basically reading the script, and you're taking notes. Um, some people prefer to handwrite the notes and then type it up, others are more comfortable just typing. Um, we don't want any email communication to include any names of any candidates, right? Because every email you send is really a public record. Um, so, hearken back to when I was walking through timeline, I spoke to you about a confidential link that you'll receive that will give you access to all the applications. That's, you're gonna hear the term Breezy, that's gonna be something that you start to hear more about. Breezy is our software, where all the applications are housed. You'll get a confidential link to Breezy to view all the applications. In addition to that, you can post information directly through Breezy. So, Dr. Trong, when you complete a reference check, and you've taken notes, then you've typed it up, you're not gonna email it, you're not gonna send it to me, you're going to actually upload that. It's very simple, and we'll give you directions on that. You're gonna upload that into this software, um, and that takes care of the security around that, and also, hopefully in terms of, because the questions are exactly the same, hopefully that mitigates bias there.
Perfect, and it's keep confidential, confidentiality, thank you.
A little question about the reference checks, because there is a, you know, not a clarity on, right now, there is no clarity on who's gonna be doing it, whether it's us or you guys. Um, would the same person be called multiple times, or just once?
So the way.
By either one of us, right?
So what we would do is we'd have a list of, um, positions, for lack of a better term, so for every finalist, uh, their HR director would be called, their board chair would be called. So you, uh, might be the person who calls the board chair for the three finalists. Um, Dr. Potter may be the one who calls the high school principal for each of the finalists. So you're getting, um, the opportunity to speak with the, the jobalikes for each of the finalists. Is that? Yeah.
Dr. Perez?
You mentioned that it's, it might be optional to do the deeper third-party check for the three finalists, but I think, um, it behooves us as a board to make sure that we do that, even if it, I can't remember if this one costs a little bit more, but it just seems like we would definitely wanna do that. So I just wanted to bring that up to the board, I don't know if anybody would question us doing that, but, yeah, okay, yeah, that would make me feel better. I wouldn't wanna hire somebody that we didn't have.
Almost everybody does that. Once in a while, we'll find a board.
Just wanted to say that out loud.
Yeah, almost everybody does that. Once in a while, we'll find a board that says, you know what, we don't wanna expend all the money, let's just do one on the finalists that we pick, and let's hope for the best. I don't see Beaverton as that board.
Sounds like we can check that off as a future agenda item.
Anything else anybody has to say? Well, thank you very much. This was very informative, and, um, I guess without any further agenda items, we can move to the next, um, so student representative, yes.
That's right, the agenda calls for a break until six-thirty, when the students.
Oh, okay.
Perfect.
All right.
Which is five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Introduction by Carrie Delf.
Just wanted to get started. We were really pleased to have our four new student board representatives here tonight. This is just the second year that the school board has had student representatives participating, and this is the new crop of students for this year. Excited to have them join us. I know the board is also looking forward to this. But before the first regular board business meeting in which the students are participating, wanted to have the opportunity to just have an introduction of the students who are coming on board and the board members and who you are. So the four board members, we, board representatives that we have this year are from four different high schools than were represented last year. All of them are a part of the Student Advisory Council and will be connecting back to that group and bringing information forward from them as well. So from Aloha High School, we have Jordan Sargent. From Mountainside, we have Tramia Klausser. May correct me on that pronunciation. From Akma is Isabel Riley. And a student at Flex is Vihan Poliwal. And if the board chair would like to invite each of them to say a little about themselves and then have board members introduce themselves as well, we have about 20 minutes in which to do that.
Yes. Thank you, Carrie. Welcome, all the student representatives. We had a great experience last year with the student reps and we are looking forward to having all of you in the board. This is going to be such a good experience for you guys, but also for us to listen to your present, your perspectives and your questions and your issues and your proposed resolutions. So I would like to ask, Jocelyn, right?
Jordan.
Jordan, sorry. If you can start with your introduction and then maybe the board can do it after all four of you.
So my name is Jordan, Aloha High School senior.
Oh, microphone. Yay.
I didn't exactly prepare an introduction completely. So what would you like to hear about?
You can talk about your experience in school. You can talk about what brings you here. What are you looking from, your experience here?
So, well, again, I guess I'll just introduce myself again. I'm Jordan. I'm a senior at Aloha High School. I do a lot of theater and leadership activities in my school. And I've done specifically the superintendent advisory committee for three years since sophomore year. And I think what I look for in general from doing this and just the experiences that I've done is just giving out my opinion and being able to be seen as shown for Aloha High School and then also to represent a bunch of people in my school and other schools.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tramia and I'm a senior at Mountainside High School. And I just want to take the time and say that I'm so honored to be selected as one of the lovely student board representative for this year. And I'm looking forward to a great year. And the reason why I wanted to do this and have this amazing role is because I feel like too often, like student voices are not that heard of, like during district meetings and like when it comes to making policies and everything. So I feel like this is a really great opportunity to, for you guys to hear our voices and then for us to connect back to our schools. All right, cool. Ooh, it's on this time. Hi, I'm Isabel. I am a student, I'm a junior at Akma. And I am on this board because I like being able to be able and sort of like in a way, stand up for the little guy and speak for those whose voices aren't heard or believe that they can't be heard or aren't worthy of being heard out. And I am excited to be on this board and show all of those people that, you know, their voice matters as a member of the youth and that sitting here is possible for them too.
Hi, everyone. I'm Vihan and I'm from Flex Online. What brings me here is just, I feel like students should have a voice in kind of their own education. I think that's important. And I, this is my second year as part of the SSAC and I also served on the Gen AI Committee. And I think that my experience on both, in both in-person school at Westview and online school at Flex is, can be really valuable here.
Thank you. We could start with Dr. Trong.
Hi, welcome. We're so glad that you're here and that you represent a student voice. Sometimes you are correct, most unheard voices and affect you, the decision that we make affect you the most. So welcome to a board and we would love you to speak your truth and also guide us, our dear adults, to make the right decisions. And welcome. Thank you.
Perez?
Hi, I'm Dr. Karen Perez. I'm a mom of somebody at Akma. So go Akma and our other schools too. We represent all of our schools, but I taught in Beaverton for 16 years and my, I also identify as a brown-skinned Latina, first generation from El Salvador. And my purpose for being on the board is I have 16 cohorts of kindergartners that I taught at Barnes Elementary. My last cohort is in 10th grade right now. And so they're across all different schools in Beaverton and I'm still connected to them and calling them and texting them to make sure they're getting to school. And so I'm excited to have you here and to have your voice here. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Potter?
Hi, Melissa Potter. I'm, I represent the Sunset High School area. I have two students in the Beaverton School District, a junior and a freshman. And I was also a teacher at Southridge and then at the district office for 14 years before moving over to higher education. So different universities. And just really excited to learn from you as you share your voice for the year and really grateful for you taking your very precious time and all of the exciting things that you have offered to you. And you've decided to join us and that is a big responsibility for us to make sure that we honor that time that you give to us and that we learn from you. So thank you so much.
Director Kasim?
Hello and welcome. My name is Sayed Kasim. I am honored to be one of the two new board members along with Dr. Trong, who just got elected to serve. I appreciate you all showing up and putting your hands up and joining us at this table. I think it extends the diversity of this board. It allows for that expansive representation of perspective and lived experiences. And we really value you leaning in, showing up and making sure your voices are heard. And we look forward to making a safe space for you to be able to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Direct, Dr. Carpenter?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm stoked. Thank you all for being here. And a lot of the agenda that we go through is going to be really boring for you. It's really boring for us. And it's important work, but the times when I think you guys are so valuable are the, so this last year, you know, we talked about the cell phone policy a lot. And I know that's been really impactful on you. And it's, you know, we did surveys and, you know, all the different ways to reach out to students, but to have four people sitting here with us to give their firsthand experience and to bring the experience of your classmates. And you can say, here's what I'm hearing. So really important and really excited that you guys are here. So thank you.
Thank you. Director Raji?
Please, welcome. Justice Raji, Zone Six. And one, thank you for joining us and taking the opportunity to be civically engaged by being in our meetings and being present, giving your feedback and your input. And in my day work, I do work around having extensive engagement and training folks sometimes to give testimony and how they engage with boards like ours. So it was really great to have you with us. I've been halfway through my first term serving on the board and I'm really looking forward to a great year having you all present with us, contributing to our conversations as we move our district forward. So thank you.
Thank you. My name is Sunita Garg and I, this is my fifth year on the board and I look forward to hearing from all four of you. And thank you for being here. It's, it's an important work. Sometimes agenda may be boring, but I think you get, you do get a chance to get your voices heard and give your opinions on things that are important to all of you because you are the ones who are going through it. And so I welcome you and we are here to help you in any way that you need. Thank you. There, yes, superintendent.
So I want to thank the students for being here. The kids were, were with us as staff this morning at the superintendent advisory, eight o'clock to nine o'clock, providing input with the, quite a few counselors as well regarding the new graduation requirements and getting, again, gathering your input in it and providing feedback also for the counselors, which was really, really good feedback. They really appreciated that. So the kids work hard and we have quite a few, but these are the representations of across the district. And just a reminder to the board and to the new board members is that we have 12 high schools, six comprehensive, six not. And we are on a, on a four, on a three-year rotation to get everybody through. So these are specific schools. Next year, we'll have four other schools represented, then we start the cycle over again. But thank you for being here.
Thank you. If, does anybody else wants to add anything? If not, then we can take another 12-minute break. Yes, yes, exactly. Yeah. So with no further agenda items, I adjourn the work session at 6:48 PM and we will meet again at 7:00 PM.